Looks like it's been delivered, but not read. So maybe we don't go ahead and get started to see if we watch it.
Sure.
If there's a progress.
Sure, that sounds good. Six o'clock, I will call our July 3 meeting to order to begin with. We'll call Joel.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Carly.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
I'm also here.
Dr. Slurnow, has the meeting been properly announced?
Yes, it has.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone like to make a mission statement?
I'll read it. The Mount Marburya School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Adam. Number two, agenda and minutes approval. Two A, approval of the presented and revised agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Jim. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of our June 19, 2023 Board Regular Meeting Minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Jim and seconded by Adam. All those in favor of approving our June 19 Board Regular Meeting Minutes, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Three, addressing the school board. Three A, school news. Ethan, do you have anything?
Regrettably, I don't have any information for us right now.
I would have been impressed and shocked.
Tell us, you were on a trip recently?
I was.
Didn't you say you were on?
Yeah, last weekend I was at the UW Madison Summer East Clinic. So I was there for the big time I saw. Cow meeting.
Definitely great that you were able to join that trip and says a great deal about...
Yeah, we had a couple other kids from Mount Marburya too. I think there was four or five of us all together. So we had a pretty good showing. And of course, John Mizaloris, the orphan teacher, is one of the main administrators for that program as well, along with his wife. So that was kind of cool, being able to see him over the summer too.
Oh, really? Yeah, my daughter did that a few years ago.
Oh, yeah. It's a lot of fun.
Well, that's just the latest example of how you just give of yourself and represent our school district so beautifully, Ethan. And as a small token of the board's appreciation, they put together a certificate for you and would like to present it and take a picture with you today. Would that be okay? Serving as our student representative, always being keen on gathering input from your fellow classmates, sharing their thoughts, representing them so nicely. Really has been a wonderful run this past year and hope you'll consider continuing to work on maybe some of the board's committees as you enter into your senior year.
Yeah.
Would it be okay everybody, we took a picture together and presented Ethan with a nice cut.
All the whole board.
Let me see, maybe we do it over here.
Sarah, can we try?
She already did.
Is that to take the picture?
What do you say we try to move these out?
Let's fall. Oh, yeah.
You should definitely be in the back. Right here. Look how tall I am. There is a time in terms of height.
Can you get us all in or?
They're in.
Okay.
Cheer up slightly, Carly. There you go. Okay. One, two, three. Just want to be back.
Good.
One, two.
Awesome.
It's been really fun to be on board with you guys.
Do you have to give you one of these up?
I've never got one of these. Collectors issue. I read the agenda, I didn't see anything like this. Kept me in the dark. Whatever happened to no surprises, Dr. Slurnow?
Dr. Slurnow, do you have some school news?
I do, I just wanted to share with you, we're on a hiatus this week from summer school and when we kick back in again, starting next week, also next week, we'll have about 60 staff members who will be attending the Professional Learning Community Conference here in Madison, fortunately, right in our backyard. This has been a vision of ours since we started now eight years ago to get as many staff members trained in the PLC movement. I hear many people tell me that it's probably the best professional development training they've had in their career and I think we'll be hitting a critical mass in terms of the percent of staff members who have participated. I acknowledge and want to acknowledge the outstanding work of Director Straka in coordinating all of this, from reservations to lunches, to transportation, to other kinds of individualized needs. You always seem to go above and beyond the call of duty and I thank you so much for that. And then lastly, Wednesday morning, if you're looking for something to do at 8:00, what are we doing, Jessica?
Well, I think. We have been invited by Rachel to present at the Good Morning Mount Marburya Chamber function, so we're going to go and give them an update about our strategic planning process and then also elicit some feedback from them in terms of priorities and how we can ensure that our graduates are meeting their business needs.
Should be nice.
Hopefully, I hope that being the day of the 4th of July, there's a good amount of people there. Does anyone else have school news to share?
The only thing, I did have a partial report back from Canada that said that they had to pause on fishing because it's too easy. They had to take breaks, they're getting tired. So it was a good trip.
That's fantastic.
Oh, that's good. I do not believe we have any citizens comments already. Personnel transactions, does there anything for us to note?
Board members, I'm really excited. Next week, our next meeting, we'll have the opportunity to introduce you, but we're asking for your approval tonight of our new Human Resources Director, Erin Esslinger. Erin might be a name you're familiar with in that she is the current 4K through 5th grade principal and human resources coordinator for the Barnabell area school district. I can't find anyone who will say anything that is a distraction to Erin, just genuinely a hard worker. I love this story about her, as a matter of fact. They had had some issues with custodial work at Barnabell, just like we all have had issues with making certain that we keep our staffing levels up. And Erin knew that her school was going to get started in just a few days. She brought her entire family, husband and kids, and they just started cleaning the building themselves just to get the school year up and going, just because they know it's important to do good and right by our kids. So when I heard that story, that just exemplifies her work ethic. Compassionate is the day is long when it comes to doing good and right by our staff and just really excited for you to get a chance to meet her family. I know she'll be a wonderful complement to an already very strong team. So thank you so much for your consideration for candidacy.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Leah and seconded by Carly. All those in favor of approving our personnel transactions, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Alrighty, moving on to number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out to discuss? I would note that there's one extra thing, our WIAA Annual Membership Contract. Do you want to say anything about it, Dr. Slurnow?
This should be familiar to board members if you've been on our team here for a while. This is our annual commitment to participating in the WIAA.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second. Alright, motion by Leah, seconded by Carly to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Moving right along. Six A, committee member reports. Rod is not with us this evening, so Jim, would you like to start with the finance committee, please?
Absolutely. I will keep this very short as we met on 6/12 and then we had a full board meeting on 6/19. So many of the things we discussed on our 6/12 finance meeting, we talked about in the 6/19. So technology purchase was one of those that we approved in the 6/19 board meeting. We did not have any donations to consider. So really, the only other thing that I'd like to mention is kudos to Scott, Liz, Mark and the team for wrapping up the fiscal year last Friday. So I know the team is very busy putting a bow on the last fiscal year and starting off with a very busy month ahead with wrapping up the year and then that goes right into audits. So Scott and team are working very hard with that and as you can imagine, it's going as smooth as ever. So kudos to you guys.
Thank you, Jim. Was there any questions or anything for Jim? Adam, you want to talk about safety and wellness committee?
Yeah, yeah, we had a really good meeting. Had some time to get into conversation on this one, so it was pretty neat to learn a little bit more, get a little deeper. The one, the one thing that took a fair amount of time in a good way was mental health update, talking about Healthy Kids Collaborative with Meritor. And just the amount of feedback that's going on in terms of how these, how kids who are having really intense situations and needing inpatient treatment are coming back to schools and having conversations around, you know, sort of that reentry process. And it was just very helpful. It sounded like Brian was reporting back of these conversations, just giving you a little bit of insight into what they're doing to your kids to come back and help us accommodate their needs too. So it was, it was a neat conversation about some kids who really need help at a tough time. And then also another deep conversation, there was a good crew of people from our administration made it up to the school personnel training in Appleton, really heavy topics about a lot of school safety issues, thinking about the worst of the worst, and then just on big picture on comprehensive school safety and kind of coming to the conclusion that as many signals as you think that you can point to about what kids are really in trouble and might be thinking about the worst things in the world, there's no pattern. And so the best you can do is just try to monitor the situation on a personal level and make sure that you have all of your controls in place and are thinking through how to approach situations as much as essentially like not stressing about some of this, thinking that you can spot someone who's on the edge because it just doesn't, it doesn't play out as much you think that it would. So it's, you know, it's a little disconcerting on the one level, you would love that you'd be able to pinpoint a little bit better, but it's also really puts the onus back on you to just think through your facilities, your plan, your approach and make sure that the human element here is covered as much as you can. And then there was one other mentioned, you know, just tied to Belucan, particularly the LEO program, that Brian circled back. We had a lot of conversations and work about how like it's hard to exit things sometimes when you've committed to something. And last summer, district committed to full training in the LEO program and there was some early buy-in and kind of hit a barrier and realized that maybe it wasn't the greatest fit and instead of forcing it, decided to rewrite the contract, have that available for people who are still interested, but back away from a full district teaching of that.
Awesome. Any questions for Adam? Carly, you want to talk about the CISA II convention?
Sure. So that was about two weeks ago, Wednesday, and held in Whitewater. So it was mostly a procedural meeting to elect the board of control for CISA. And our cluster has Verona, Middleton, Cross Plains, and Wisconsin Heights. We, our current representation is active through 2024, so nobody in ARGE needed to be reelected. So that part of the meeting was pretty quick, but then the keynote, they had a keynote before that part of the meeting given by a woman named Nicole Norhester, who I believe is from either Middleton or Bonona Grove. She's a former teacher, an instructional coach. She runs a company called True North Consulting that focuses on well-being, personal well-being, work well-being, and she just kind of led us through an exercise of looking at like one of those webs where you kind of like a graph, graphical web, where you rank like your, how you would rate your well-being, emotional, social, occupational, financial, and so on. And what came out of it was that she said a lot of people rank their occupational well-being high, which is an indicator that people pour themselves into their work, which I think, you know, I think rings true. And then she kind of led that to an ARGE, to a discussion around how important it is for work force to focus on educator well-being, making sure that our staff and teachers are, feel that their needs are being met in all sorts of ways, which ties right into the LEO program that you were talking about. So it's good that, I think it's good that we're adjusting that as needed to figure out what, where those needs really are and how we can do a better job with that. She, there was some discussion, like it was, it was really short portion of the meeting, so we couldn't get too far into depth, but there was some discussion around what other districts are doing to support educator well-being. Somebody talked about how they, you know, formalized recognition programs, somebody talked about how they dedicated a whole PD day to wellness programming that was sponsored by a local clinic. They brought a clinic in and they had things like financial counseling or yoga or all sorts of different things. And then there was some brief discussion on what are some things that might detract from educator well-being and so a little bit of discussion around expanded workloads and higher expectations and so on. And there were, so there was a couple suggestions. One, she suggested making well-being a decision point when you're making decisions in general, like similar to how we might do it with the DEI lens, but to make a decision with how does this impact educator well-being in mind and see if there are adjustments to make from there. And then I think as far as takeaway is, I think, I looked at the, in looking at the strategic plan, we have well-being obviously as one of the big pillars and engagement employees is one of those. And so it's just a good reminder, I think, to keep that in the forefront as we develop the next strategic plan.
Awesome. Carly, any questions for Carly? Alrighty, moving on to six C, information advocacy report from Brian on academic, social, emotional readiness.
This is, this is kind of always a fun information advocacy report because it talks about all the work that we're doing, right? Well, the last meeting we were at kind of talked about the data and the statistics on where our kids are at. And then this is like what we're doing about it and what are some resources and areas that we go into it. And the first kind of piece of it is our student demographic, right? Who are the kids that we're teaching? Who's in front of us? Because that's an important element that we have to constantly adjust, knowing the background experiences that our kids. This year in particular is the most year where we've tried to like get to the root. So we are kind of, in special ed, when you do an IEP, like a service, like you ask five whys, trying to get to the root cause. If they're not reading, what's the root cause of why they're not reading? And we do the same thing in behavior. And so this year, we've had a lot more meetings with families and all the teachers involved, trying to get to the root cause of what's really happening to behaviors and then how can we adjust to be able to fit that need. And so those are some examples and things that we're going to talk about today because we're, our commitment to the well-being and looking at the whole child as a whole. When you look at our, the first kind of data, and we'll kind of go into it a bit further, but we have 347 students with IEPs and 76 students with 504 plans. I wanted to just mention this ahead of time because our numbers are a little bit higher. We're seeing like this slow, steady increase. And so due to that, we put some limitations on open enrollment, which you guys approve every January. So you know, we don't allow specific students with speech and language, hearing, vision, or occupational therapy. We don't have room within our programs to have any more students. So in previous years, you've seen like we entered 14 kids through open enrollment where two left. And this year, the data is that we had zero kids come in to our district through open enrollment and two kids leave. And so that's, that's kind of the rationale behind why we had zero kids this year come in with special needs. Now, next year, because we've already approved, we will have a couple who are going to come in with IEPs, but this year it's enough. So one of the things that we continue to do is place students with IEPs to match their educational needs. This is a picture, as you can see, the face is blurred out, but one of our students this year officially graduated through Richardson School. He got his diploma through our district, but they, he did not walk across our stage, but he did through their program and they had a big celebration. We sent staff out there and it was, I talked to him afterwards and he just talked about how special it was that he had the most people out of anybody there who was there to support him and it was a good feeling. But we have students who are in our 18 to 21-year-old program. We also have students going to Madison College as a gateway to college. So they're earning high school credit and college credit at the same time. So it's really prepping them for success. And, you know, to be honest, the students who we've had go there probably would have ended up dropping out of our school. And so now they're, they're coming out with a high school diploma and college credit. It's really setting them up for success. Richardson, and then we also have students at Common Threads, which is a program in McFarland. They really kind of focuses on all needs, but kind of also really focuses, has kind of a, the big background is working with students with autism and really supporting kind of the sensory piece and their goal is to like get them, get individualized, stabilized, get them in a good place, and then get back into the district as soon as possible. So, so those are some different programs that we have set and, and just, you know, the pictures that you can see, right, are good examples of why we're doing the work we're doing. Homecoming court this year and inclusive practices and important work. So here's just a longitudinal snapshot over the past five years. It's just creeping up, not a huge spike, but just slowly, slowly moving. It doesn't feel like much when it's 10 kids, you know, in one year, when you spread it across 4K or pre-K through 12, but then, you know, when you look five years, now we're 50 students. And then, so that starts to feel a little bit different. And then if you go to the next one, what's always interesting, right, is the big numbers to look at, right, are the 91 and the 70. Those are increasing, our speech and language and our students with other health impairment. But what we're seeing more of is the twos and the threes down below. And then those are more specialized services that we contract out through. So vision, we contract out through an agency. Hearing, we contract out through CISA V. And then OI, we internally intake, but that usually involves much more staff, staff support. So, and that's more orthopedic, so that would be more significant, significant needs as well. And then our, okay, I wrote this down. We have 76 students with the 504 plan and last year we had 53. So that's kind of a bigger increase. And to be honest, that number does kind of fluctuate from year to year and that is really pretty typical of the progression that you see is that we have very few in elementary school, a little bit more in middle school, and then a pretty high number usually in high school. And that's kind of the progression of, you know, reading to learn. And then as kids get older, they need more accommodations as tests become more formal, more part of the grades, and then more writing assignments as well. So you'll, a lot of our kids have dyslexia and need writing accommodations. So these are not special ed supports, but they're accommodations and a lot of these skills fall on the teachers in the classrooms to implement.
Yeah, of course.
Some of these students, are these also students who might have, you know, pretty intense anxiety or depression?
Yep, yep. Yeah, so our school psychologist at our high school is the organizer now of 504 plans because it just makes the most sense with her seeing the students, a majority of the students the closest. And so, yeah. So a lot of, we'll have some counseling minutes and some of those things in those 504 plans too. So then in terms of just kind of looking at academics, we're continuing to really focus on universal supports and problem-solving teams and trying to really support, you know, kind of having that intervention of support down. One of our, the biggest things that you've heard a lot about, especially with Sarah, is the really strong focus on teacher clarity this year and the work on what are we teaching and what do we want you to learn, you know, when you walk away out of here. And just having those clear goals is really super important for all kids. But I think of like our kids who need more interventions, to know exactly what the goal is and what the success criteria is really helps special ed teachers be able to put in accommodations and modifications so we can all reach that same goal. So the four kind of pictures below are things that we're still working hard on, right? The zones of regulation is a really important piece that we're doing K5. The school connect is the social-emotional curriculum for our high school piloted this year, will be implemented next year. The green space at the IC is continuing, it's busy all the time, so much so that the PC is in work, so getting a similar, not quite as U space, but a similar space as well. And then our work around with Jennifer Worley, who has Cup of Counseling. She continues to do monthly videos that are, they end up going in the HR newsletter. So they're just like 10-minute videos for staff on well-being and mental health. And then she did this one on motivation and deflation for staff, for parents this year.
Would you be willing to give a Reader's Digest version of Green Space?
Yeah.
Because it's really cool.
Yeah, so at the IC, it's basically a, like a little mini classroom and it's really set up in terms of the zones of regulation. So what are areas that you might, if you're having anxiety, here's like four different activities that you can do to get rid of, you know, to decrease your anxiety. Or if I'm super hyper, here's three things and you can see, there's tunnels, there's tents, there's weighted blankets, there's a lot of like sensory toys that you can flip and just kind of watch, you know, flow down. There's an exercise bike. There's like things you can step on or like weights, like that can kind of hold you, like, they just kind of help with your sensory, being able to kind of grab you back in your own space. And so kids sign up. It's a proactive strategy, so it's not when a kid's in crisis, they come to this space. It's that we know a kid is continually like having a really hard time about 10:00. So at 9:45, let's come in here, let's do 10 minutes. They come in, a student services member's in there, they set a little timer, they use the space, and then they go back to their class. So it's just kind of a break for them to be able to use it. Remember last year, and I can make sure if it's not in there, there's a little video. So for the new board members, there's a student who actually, last year when he put this in, walked everybody through what they did. So I can send that out as well. So it's kind of, it was a kind of a quote.
And anecdotally, our teachers are reporting that our kids are doing better when they come back into the regular classroom setting and they're able to pick that up and continue what?
Right, right. Instead of the slow gradual escalation, which is what we were seeing before, kids having a harder, harder, harder time, it's already too late at that point, so.
And you said that they're going to create something similar to PC?
Correct, yeah.
And I'm sure that it would look different, but what about middle school or any of our other buildings?
Yeah, so the middle school has a, has a very different kind of a building. They're not quite there yet because they don't have the space for it. We have an OTPT room that we're, that'll be more for kids with IEPs that will be its own space next year, but they really use the fishbowl as like a decompression, calm-down space. Like a lot of kids will go in there for five or 10 minutes. Yeah, and then the high school kind of has the same similar setup as well. So then, you know, just kind of going through, then as you, if you've gone through this, there's a ton of work. And Adam, I appreciate you talking about how we talked about the Healthy Kids Collaborative because this, after this, you know, we present this tonight, then be sending this to Sean Cobel at Healthy Kids Collaborative because he wants to kind of look through it and we're continuing to work together. And then he's going to offer suggestions on what gaps we might be missing. So just if, we wanted to talk about a few different things, right? Teacher clarity is in each one. The biggest, most important thing that we probably do at the... The biggest, most important thing that we probably do at the K-2 or pre-K-2 is the check-in, check-out. It's a great intervention that has worked really, really well for kids. They have one trusted adult, they meet within the morning, they set behavioral expectations for the day. Teachers fill out forms throughout the day and then at the end of the day, they meet with the teacher. Their trusted adult, again, they go through all that forms and then they have a connected relationship and then there might be rewards or prizes connected to that as well. So it's a super simple component, but it's the two most important things. There's documentation and there's relationship building. And that's what kind of works the best, especially with little kids. And then three through five kind of are, what you'll kind of see is that there's one slide that just talks about the social group. So in every building, they're doing small group instructions of groups of kids in every building. And it just kind of progresses up. And so kind of at the three, five, they're doing grief groups, anxiety group, anger management, self-regulation, problem-solving, family changes and friendships. And that's by the school counselor, the school psych and social worker. The thing that does start in third through fifth grade is we do, about a year ago, we redid our suicide risk assessment protocol. And so all of our student services staff are trained in that. And so if we do have any indication, or even if a kid, you know, jokingly around says, "I'm gonna kill myself", but we still do a suicide risk assessment just to make sure, to see if that could be serious. And then we go through steps of contacting parents, letting them know, and then progressing it up if we feel that there's more of a risk. So that starts in the IC level. And then, you know, we, at the middle school, again, it changes, the group counseling changes to friendship, self-esteem, self-management, mindfulness, family change and then grief too, right? So it just kind of progresses its way up as you get older. And then a lot more restorative circles that are facilitated by student services members. So kids aren't getting along, how do we work that out together? And then high school, our SCL curriculum pilot this past year. And then another fun, important thing that our whole student services team did this year was that they were trained in SEBIRs, which is the screening, brief intervention, and then service. So then we get them to a service. And so they were trained in that and that's all really focused on AODA components. And so individuals who were potentially thinking might be struggling in those areas, we can screen them for it, we can give a brief intervention and then refer to service. And so that's been really helpful. And then we're also been working on adding the Your Choice Curriculum to Health, which will also be a really direct AODA curriculum for students that kind of talks about, instead of the like, "Don't do it", it's a, it's your choice, but these are the consequences that come from it. That's kind of the work that's being done and, and like I said, the next step is handing it off to Meriter and figuring out what gaps are in place, how we can move forward and continue to support kids.
Any questions for Brian?
Brendan, one question at the start, when you were talking about the overall numbers going up with, can you project out with our declining population in the younger grades, whether the total numbers are gonna stay high? Just think about like percentage.
Yeah, and we're at a percentage that we pretty much, I think we're at about thirteen or fourteen percent now and where we pretty much don't want to get much higher than that. And so I'm not projecting as, if our enrollment numbers continue to decline a little bit, I would hope that our numbers will stabilize and continue to stay the same. But I do, you know, Mount Horbury's a district and it continues to be when, when new families come in, move into the district and they continually say, "We've heard your reputation for supporting kids with disabilities." And so it is a place where, you know, maybe a disproportionate want to move to the community to get their services. And so it could continue to rise.
Brian, can you touch on the Sabers Program?
Do we, we give that to the freshmen, but don't we also administer that?
Sixth and fourth grade.
Sixth and fourth, okay, that's one question. What other groups?
Yep, we do it in each grade. We talked as a safety and wellness team, or the SAW team, about doing it always in sixth grade. So that way they have their, like their transition to middle school, we can test right away how it's going as well as the ninth grade. And then we also did, there's one group of kids that have had a lot of loss. They were this year's, I think, ninth grade and so we'll always do that grade. So as that grade moves up, would they get, they get, just to continually monitor. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so I'm not sure how well formulated my question's gonna be. So how is this communicated to students, number one? And number two, is this married with essentially what I think about as code of conduct, right? So we've got this mental health and wellness stuff when we talk about readiness. But, I mean, just being a, being a good kid when you're within the school walls, that's another, that's another at least signal of behavioral and all kinds of other wellness as well. So how, how do we marry those two and communicate all that to students? Because they're not, they are, this is not disconnected from, from conduct, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And so what I would say is that I don't think that this information's, like a lot of this is, is just given to all kids, right? So the zones is taught to everybody, the Zillow lessons, just looking at this page, right? Digital citizens lessons, everybody gets it. When you're talking about the specific groups, it's teacher recommendation and it's family recommendation. So a lot of times, especially as kids get older, they feel more and more comfortable coming to the student services zone. So it might come from a teacher, or it might come from the student themselves, and then they're asked to join a group, but they don't ever, they don't ever have to. And so it really kind of comes from those three areas, a student request. And they also meet with every student who is new to the district to talk about how things are going. They meet with the family, how did things go in the past, do you need anything to start setup? They start in a group. It's hard within any community to be brand-new in fourth or fifth grade, right? And so they're automatically in a group to start, but they can choose to say no. And then, you know, and then it kind of goes down the other way, but yeah. And then it's a lot of the other kid things too, right? And especially K-5, PVIS is, is a really big, you know, kind of program that the district does that gives everybody kind of rewards for just good behavior and.
Let's just not forget that, that's a big, big piece of this as well.
Thank you. Thank you to our student services team for putting together this menu of options to meet families' needs. It's really remarkable for a school district, our science.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Sixty, strategic plan, Dr. Salina.
Well, good evening again, everyone. You may recall this past spring, we administered a survey that wasn't created by the Mount Horbury School District. It was actually created by School Perceptions back in 2014. And what I like about this is that now that this is the third administration of the survey, we can get some longitudinal data in terms of how people are perceiving our work and what's important to them. And so it might be helpful to note that we administered this towards the end of the school year, which I think might elicit some responses that aren't always as favorable as maybe if you had, you had administered this at a different time of the school year. But nonetheless, we had a really good response rate, about six hundred and sixty-four people who responded. And there are a couple of limitations to this that I think are really important that I highlight before we delve into the details. First of which is that it was only the 2014 administration of the survey that was mailed out to families all around the region, as well as people who don't have kids in our schools. And so it's really hard for us then to extrapolate disaggregated data, chopping data up into smaller pockets just simply because we can't necessarily compare 2014 and 2023 administration on a couple of questions. Suffice to say, I really do think we had a relatively good turnout of people who don't have kids in our school district who took the time to complete that. We alerted the community through an op-ed piece that we ran in the Mount Horbury Mail and then also through work that I've done with the chamber and with the Rotary. And then lastly, social media is always a good, helpful tool for us in getting the word out, so. Let's dig in. I thought you might be interested in just seeing the distribution of those folks who responded by age during this most recent survey. And then some of the questions you'll see here are important when we disaggregate data. Are you an employee of the Mount Horbury School District? One in five respondents were. Children attending, and then you can also see the parentheses. You can see the difference between the last time we administered the survey and then this current iteration. Volunteering, you'll note that that went down significantly and I wonder if that might just be a byproduct of the COVID malaise that we're all experiencing and that we might eventually see an opportunity to improve that. But I do think that might be a focal point in our, in our next, our next strategic plan.
Steve, just a quick, the minus fifteen percent, that's, that's based on gross numbers, right? Now, it's, those are, it's not percentage points. So it wasn't forty-five percent and now it's at thirty. There are numbers behind that you've calculated that.
Correct, yeah. The number of graduates from Mount Horbury School District who completed the survey, I thought was a good sign for us. And in fact, as we begin to think about our resource developer and developing a database for potential alumni, possible revenue streams there, tapping into their feedback when we disaggregate the data around what those individual people felt might be helpful in us maybe trying to get some additional revenue in our district. Other important parts, special education. We had about fifteen percent of our parents respond that their child is receiving special educational services and that's commensurate with what we just heard from, from Brian and is commensurate with most school districts. Anywhere between fifteen and eighteen percent of the school district, we do have with special needs students. And then we know that we have a good, almost one in four people who responded who don't quite have kids in the middle or high school age. So that might also impact our survey results.
A quick question.
Oh, please, go ahead.
You said that was specific to if you have a child in the district, that's not the overall, fifteen percent's not the overall?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't know why I have got.
Sorry about that.
Oh, good. These are the slides that I think are really interesting. This gets to the meat and potatoes of our study. And I wrote this down based upon a weighted score, scale. And I took the view of both our staff as well as our non-staff as to what are the most important areas? How are we doing on a scale of one to five, five being exceptional, zero being absolutely poor? What observations do you have about what you're seeing here? Two thousand fourteen on the far right, two thousand seventeen administration, and then the weighted scale in two thousand twenty-three. One of them to me is personal finance. We've come a long way in this regard. Many people are very pleased with the work that has been done and the offerings that we now have at the high school and that was a specific movement by the board. Health education continues to be on an upward trajectory. But there are also some areas that some folks felt like maybe we could be doing a little better. Competitive athletics. For whatever reason, I'd want to scratch that a little bit more and learn more about what does that mean?
Music.
Oh, and music, yes. Oh, please.
Next to the question, are we about, is are these numbers saying like what people view the importance of these topics is? Or is it how they think our school is tackling?
Good question. So the actual question is, how are we doing? So it's a value, or they feel like we're doing.
That's what I thought that was. Our community priorities or that was how the community thinks, like a community value, that's the next one.
Yeah. Because I think if we asked it this way, and I think what School Perceptions thought in 2014 when they developed it, you get the answer to both.
Yeah.
If you ask it this way, so it makes sense. And then cumulative differences, I thought maybe it would be helpful then just to take this and take the two thousand twenty-three weighted average and then the two thousand fourteen weighted average by staff and non-staff. You can see where we've got to do, as President Aragony mentioned, the music, the agriculture and the like. And not saying that we're doing poorly in these, in this regard, it just says that, you know, over time, we've made some inroads in a number of areas. And that's what we saw in our strategic plan. We attempted to purposely work on those individualized areas, mental health, guidance, student counseling services and the like. Now, this is another question that I find really helpful to our work. The items in gray are the two thousand seventeen weighted average and the items in red are two thousand twenty-three. And the question reads, what should the greatest priorities be over the next five years? Always, our community is so supportive in saying, let's continue to recruit and retain high-quality staff. Well, you'll see that, that number over the, since 2014, if you dig into the deeper dive, we've made significant inroads in this regard. Obviously, the operational referendum will help us to this extent. Developing new and innovative programs to improve learning is another area that has seen some growth in our work. And then preparing for students' life after school. Not necessarily a collegiate pathway, but focusing more on readiness levels for kids once they get out of high school. And to be honest with you, this excites me quite a bit because when I came here eight years ago, the focus was always college, college, college. And college absolutely has its place for, for kids. But there's also a place for kids to be very successful in programs that don't require a four-year degree. And Jessica and I were talking about this earlier today. Madison College and some of our other colleges, Fenimore and the like, they really have done a great job of stepping up their game to provide opportunities for our kids to continue their education in a non-traditional four-year university pathway. And for that matter, our businesses have done a really nice job of opening up their doors to ensure that our kids have an opportunity to grow firsthand and maybe not have that formal collegiate training and eventually go back to school. So I'm really excited to see that people are beginning to realize that you can have a fulfilling, and I mean that both personally and professionally, career without having to feel like you're being forced into a four-year college pathway. In other incidences, instances you see here, our struggle continues. For example, despite our focus on mental health, if I show you this, this may be a better way to look at this document. We can see, we've seen the number of providers that we've offered, the number of services we offered. You just saw that great menu that Brian just shared with us. The hiring and providing enough psychologists, social workers continues to be a priority and we just can't seem to get ahead of that. I kind of sense that when you see the largest differences in negative numbers, it might mean that maybe, and it might, I underscore the word might, might mean that actually people are feeling more comfortable with the direction that we've been moving as a school district in those areas. But there are other areas that we've really got some work to do. I was surprised at the ATODA concerns for students. That was a big issue back in 2014. Not so much now. And I wonder if that might have something to do with how people are feeling about marijuana usage and these sorts of things in our, in our world today versus nine years ago when this was first administered. So this is very telling and I think will help us a great deal in formulating some considerations for our next, our next strategic plan.
I would say that the, my speculation, the increase of families wanting people to support students' mental health, that has become such a forefront for so many families. And I think that's probably overcoming the alcohol, tobacco and any other issues related to that are kind of tied into mental health. I think that it's probably, there's probably connection there. I think that there's probably a connection there.
And our district is really, that's a wonderful observation. Our district, I think, has really done a good job of addressing mental health concerns. And the media has done a good job of shining a light on this, that people are now more aware of the need. And so maybe that might also play into why that number is so much more than we would have expected.
This can also be a talking point for our no-cellphone policy. I'm being serious.
You're right.
You know, we know that mental health is a concern of the community, and it's a concern for their academics.
I wrote that in my letter back to my parents that's going actually out on July tenth, so we're thinking along the same wavelength. But, you know, this one always is fascinating to me. This helps us understand in three areas how people are feeling about our quality of our academic program. And you'll see a bit of a dip there. You'll also see a bit of a dip in the extent to which people feel as though we're meeting the personalized instructional needs of students. The one bright spot is students have access to additional support when needed. I thought maybe it would be helpful just to take, for example, high-quality academic program and break that down by grade level. I didn't put it up on the chart, but I thought maybe trying to discern where is the reduction occurring? And by and large, when you take your strongly agree and agree, we are across the board at eighty-plus percent of people feeling as though that we've got a strong academic program. So it's not to say that when we're sitting at, what's that, eighty-two, eighty-three percent, that suddenly that this is crisis mode. It is, though, to suggest that we are seeing some people not know enough. The number of not applicable or didn't know the answer to grew between two thousand seventeen's administration and two thousand twenty-seven, which tells me that we need to do a better job of communicating about our academic programs. Tells me that we need to do a better job of communicating about individual student needs and how we help to differentiate instruction for kids. And if you're interested, I'm happy to share that breakout by grade level. But I know in the interest of time, I might just continue along. Maybe this is also a good place for me to stop and just check in for questions.
I was curious about the grade level on personalized instruction, because I think your experience with in the PC where your students with one teacher might be different from high school where they're with multiple during the day. And so that was one I was curious about.
Yeah, in fact, thanks for asking. When you look at the percent of people who are remarks disagree to that question, I'm referring to teachers' personalized instruction to meet individualized student needs. If I took K two, separated them from three, five, separated them from six, eight, and separated from nine, twelve, each grade level goes up higher and higher. So as we get older and older, people are perceiving that maybe we're not being as individualized in our instruction to kids. Almost to the tune of one-third at the high school believing that we're not where we need to be in this regard. Yet they'll tell us that they strongly agree at the high school, that they do have access to additional support when needed. In fact, they were the highest at the high school in the strongly agreed category to that second question. So what that tells me is that those folks who feel like they're not getting the personalized instruction know that at least they can get some additional help somewhere. But that's a disconcerting number. And I think that might be something that, if not in our strategic plan for the board, this might be a topic of focus for our high school team as they begin to think about their goals going into next year. I like this next slide because it, in my mind, addresses a number of our professional learning community questions. You may remember that when professional learning communities meet, they ask a number of questions, four questions, but two of them resonate with me here. The first question, this has to do with academic consistency within grade levels. So the first question we ask is, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And we want our staff to have some continuity in terms of the scope, the sequencing of their curriculum, the instruction, the data measurements of whether or not a student's hit mastery. And is there some variance in what we expect of our students? And you can see that we can do a better job of communicating to our community that, based upon the don't know and doesn't apply, that what we are doing around our curriculum. We've done a lot of work to communicate it, but maybe we've done too much to communicate it, in my opinion, with the website and board recaps, that maybe we're confusing people. And there's a better way to be concise about this, to bring clarity to it. It might be a bit overwhelming. And the second question is, what do we do when we know that the student isn't getting there, the student isn't meeting mastery? And so there's some inconsistency, it appears, from families, particularly at the high school, who believe that the academic consistency within grade levels varies greatly. This is another neat question I like, in that is the porch too cold? Is it too hot, or is it just right? And it seems to me that the number of people who feel like it's just right has continuously dropped, but they seem to be breaking to the too low versus the don't know, don't apply. And so when I break that out, I'm finding that middle school and high school families felt more that it's too low. And maybe this is worthy of some conversation around what we expect of our students academically. That's what this question's about academically, and how do we help to engage them there.
I mean, I think this is a really important question that we're going to have to talk a lot about when we have another crack at it. I mean, it strikes me as one of these questions where we sort of don't know what we don't know. And, you know, you'd think that the too high number if, might fluctuate a little bit, but it doesn't. And what that tells me is, well, we're not really familiar with what too high is because we're, you know, we're pretty comfortable right here. So I think we're going to have to really think that through.
I would even wonder, like speculatively wise, I mean, if we're seeing those numbers of too low increasing as you go to middle school and high school where students are offered more autonomy with the classes they take into schedule, is it possible students aren't pushing themselves enough? Or we need to start encouraging them to take harder classes? Because their parents might just see them not working on stuff, whereas they could just be involving themselves more than they are.
Yeah.
Those are the stages where we're at. Because obviously, when you're in elementary school, you're in more of a position where you're kind of told what to do. Whereas when you're at the higher stages of your education, it's more exciting to set your own pace.
I think I'm hearing both of you say that there's this kind of programatic model at the K probably six level, but once you get into seven, twelve, there's some individualization. And there is an opportunity, I think about Algebra I A and I B at the high school. We were finding that kids were not being challenged enough. And so we're moving to remodel that offering, take away that offering and ask that we bring all kids up to a higher expectation. There's lots of little things like that I'm sure we can find to make better. Please.
I think too, now that the kids can catch up, like, so they're gone a week from school because they're sick. They can now catch up, like, online, whereas before they couldn't. And so as a parent, I can see that my kid is catching up on a week's worth of assignment over, like, a couple hours on a Saturday where he's like, oh, I'm all caught up. I'm like, that seems impossible to me, that you missed an entire week of school and you were already caught up in a few hours. And so I think that's where some of that comes in because we didn't really have that, as parents, that insight before because now a lot of stuff's on Google Classroom, and we can see what they've turned in. I think that might be part of it as well.
It's a great observation.
So I was focused more on essentially not high enough, which is the three very small bars to the left. And while I was listening to the other speaker, I really started focusing on too low. And that is a frightening number. That should frighten all of us, that twenty-five percent of those people who responded to the survey think that academic expectations in this district are too low. A quarter? That's, I mean, that is, that's, I get it, that's crazy. I mean, that is really, really something.
To this point, give us more, help us get better. And when you break it out, K two and three, five, the below twenty percent in this regard, still high in my opinion. But when you get into six, eight, it's a quarter of the students, and then nine, twelve is thirty percent of the respondents. I should mention, this is probably adults, not necessarily students.
Right, right.
I always think my C surveys like this too, comparatively to other districts. Weirdly measure up. I mean, I like measuring against ourselves for sure, but just to have a little bit more perspective.
That would be cool, wouldn't it? I don't know that school perceptions has administered this survey to others. We haven't changed the survey, so I wonder, I could certainly ask them if they've done this very same survey. Why don't I make a note of that? Here's, digging into this question a little bit further then, is about homework. That drop from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three, too much, I guess is probably from the pandemic. But the too little piece, I think, also might speak to the question of the previous slide.
I also wonder, especially because at the high school level, you know, we've restructured the high school schedule where students have more time, purposely have more time to work on homework while they're at school, while they can access their teachers. So then as parents, we're used to, what do you mean, you don't have four hours of homework? That's what we did when I was in high school. So, I mean, I think it's, part of it is too, just a shift of how things are done in school, possibly.
Yeah, that just right response, for the most part, broke to the don't know, doesn't apply. And maybe that's also in part because we have a larger number of community members who responded to this survey who wouldn't necessarily know because they don't have children in the system any longer. That wasn't important, paid up to note. And then, how do you like to get your feedback? Email continues to be a good one. Our staff always avails themselves to parents and district mailing sometimes. And then I ask people to tell us how they felt about their schools. And this kind of goes back to that malaise that I feel like is kind of, and this may be editorializing in my mind, but there seems to just be a general malaise in our country right now around a lot of things. And people aren't as happy with several institutions or several organizations. We've been through a lot with COVID. We're testing these questions at the end of a school year, which tends to be a very stressful time. And so we see a drop that's of concern to me. Again, five being high, but still just over four of people feeling proud of their schools. I'd like to see what that looks like, to add to your question, in other school communities. But I do feel like people are still supportive of their schools. When we look at the very last question about bullying, that was one that was important to me, as you may recall. We had an interesting social media post that went out about the time that this survey was administered. Probably it was something about, someone had some concerns about bullying in the school district, and it was in a parent group. And that survey yielded a lot of conversation from about fifteen people, but probably hundreds of comments that, when I gave the posts to my administrators and said, hey, guys, let's go in, in the interest of service, recovery with these families and find out where is the problem and how can we do better by these families? Understandably, sometimes some of the information was not entirely accurate that was posted on social media. So there's this belief that we have a problem with bullying in our schools. But when we ask the question about safety in our schools, our students are feeling very safe. In fact, the number of respondents who said that they were either sick, strongly agree to the safety question or agreed with the safety question, was over ninety-three percent at each of our elementary, middle, and high schools. So it goes back to, let's triangulate the data for a minute. It goes back to what we learned at the YRBS data last time, which was, we have this belief that there's some problems with bullying in our schools. It's not happening to me, but we have this belief that it's happening. And therefore, we would like to, we think it's something we need to focus on. And so we have a plan in place this fall to do just what we heard our families tell us, which was, show us how you're communicating about the bullying process, the investigation process, the expectations you have for staff around bullying. And we're going to record that, we're going to have some, maybe even an informational night for families too. So we want to be responsive. This is good feedback that our families are giving us.
Real quick on that last question?
Yeah.
I've noticed in the last, in this last year specifically, like, field trips. They're like, we're only taking five parents, and you get put in a pool. And I don't remember it being that limited when my two older ones were that age. And so I wonder if that's some of it. And also, we didn't let volunteers in for a good shout last year, and it was still a little slow on the giddy up this year. So I think that might be a good part of it. But I do feel like there are less opportunities. I remember getting asked, you know, come in to do a reading, come in to do... I feel like we didn't have any of that this year, which is still probably recovering from, you know, our lockdowns and stuff. But I would love to see some of those. And some of the, like, events, Science Night, Reading Night, some of those other events, they didn't happen this year, and they've happened in the past.
Good feedback. And that goes back to that very first slide where we talked about the number of volunteers we need, since we're not offering enough. So when we look at a couple of questions related to our facilities, buildings and grounds, and classroom space, you might imagine that those at the younger grade levels responded that they didn't feel like we had adequate classroom space, which I think portends for the conversation we've been having around facility usage at the ELC PC. By and large, people are relatively pleased with how we're keeping up our grounds. And I know much rain lately, that might have changed their response or two, but the truth of the matter is that we're very fortunate to have an outstanding buildings and grounds team. And then, your overall perception of the school district, how would you rate these different groups? And that's pretty commensurate with what we've seen throughout. This one here, I'm going to skip this here real quick. This is the one that kind of caught me off guard. Again, one to five, five being high, rate yourself in terms of how satisfied you are with the district. The last time we administered this, our school district was just over four. So we are down fifteen one-hundredths of a point since the two thousand seventeen administration of this. And so I think this is part of where we really need to work on the customer service side of the house as we begin to think about the next iteration of our strategic plan, bearing in mind what we know about the administration timing of the survey. I don't know, any of you like to read any of Gallup's stuff? The Hope Index, I love that. Hope Index demonstrates right now that we're about twenty percent off of where we were in just four years' time in terms of how people feel about just general institutions, schools, Supreme Court, you name it, people are feeling down. So I wonder, timing, how much of a factor is this? But we can't just disregard this data. We need to take it to heart, and we need to work to it. So last thing on this, and then I'll get out of your hair and open it up for additional questions. What are we going to do with this? How are we going to move forward? You will be receiving a survey from me in a couple of days that will ask you to take each facet of the strategic plan, it's Survey Monkey, and decide whether or not you believe that that specific facet needs to continue or we're where we need to be and we can discontinue this. That coupled with administering that same survey to our administrators through our August retreat that we'll be having with them on August fifteenth will allow us to shape a draft of a strategic... will allow us to shape a draft of a strategic plan for the board's consideration. And we'll spend time fine tuning it. I ask you to identify specific data sets that maybe you're seeking for inclusion in the next iteration of the survey. What metrics we might use to consider whether or not we're growing or maybe we're not working up to our fullest potential. And then ultimately invite the community and invite our staff in to have some conversation about, here's our draft. Push back on us, tell us where you think we need to be. And eventually, hopefully be able to have a board approval of this in the spring. Ultimately then, like we've done with the last iteration of the strategic plan, we've developed a complimentary administrative strategic plan that kind of gets at the big rocks. Last thing I think is really important and I'm real proud of that we've done as a school district is, you know, and the public knows, every time we do an information and advocacy report, you get the metric on where we are with students' performance. We just saw that tonight in Brian's report. And we post those, for the most part, we got to do a better job of it, on our district's website. Each of our information advocacy reports are there for people to see and we touch on them in our board recaps that we do on the Tuesdays after each board meeting. And so, we've come a long way. In two thousand fourteen, this Board of Education had a one-page strategic plan and I think it listed three things on it. It talked about safety, technology, and then we want students to grow. Right now, we are measuring forty-five different data sets across thirteen objectives within four goals. Now, that's a lot for a school district our size to be considering in a strategic plan. And I compliment the team here for helping us and it'd be easy to play whack-a-mole with all these data sets, but they really do an exceptional job of keeping their eye on the ball and aligning our resources to making certain that what we say we're going to do, we're going to accomplish. And so, I end with where I kind of began and that is just to remind folks that the goal of a strategic plan, in my mind, is to build hope, compassion, stability and trust within our community, within those we serve. Because that's what they look to for leaders, hope, compassion, stability and trust. And I think there are a number of things that we can do to augment that hope. I think there are a number of things that we don't need to sell out our entire strategic plan that we've got in place right now. We can bring some stability there. And the data brings about that trust. So I think we've come a long way in four years' time and we've got some work to do moving forward, but I'm really grateful for the feedback and the response that we received on this survey. It helps us find our North Star. What kinds of other observations or questions might I be able to answer for you?
Anyone? Otherwise, as Dr. Slarno shared, he has a survey that he's going to send to all of us and I believe we'll discuss the results of that at our next workshop.
Do we have a written communication plan for the district? Where we say, okay, we're going to send out X, Y and Z every month and then we go back and look at that? I'm just wondering, we see this, how do I say this? Part of a good communication plan is quieting the noise, right? I mean, that's, everybody's bombarded with all this craziness all the time. And do we look at the communications, we're sending them out, the number that are positive versus the number that are negative or concerned with issues, that kind of stuff? Do we have a written plan that we adhere to on any of that?
Pillar four of the board strategic plan does that. It identifies, not to the extent of going back and analyzing the messaging around our strengths and our developmental needs, but it does talk about the importance of board recap, talk about the importance of social media presence. Think information advocacy reports is another example of that. But I'm really excited about this director of personnel and resource development, excuse me, public relations and resource development that will help us maybe even fine tune and make it stronger. We've got some work to do there. If anybody's interested, it is in our strategic plan when you go to this document here. You may remember seeing something like this. And what I tried to do was take each of the board's strategic objectives and place them out month by month to talk about when are we going to look at the data related to this specific objective. And you'll see here, we're moving in a cheap seat, you might have a hard time seeing this, but we do talk about social media presence, referendum progress report newsletters we've done. Now we're doing more guest editorials every month. But yet, to your point of actually analyzing, it is something we should probably consider.
Jessica, can you remind us when our next, I believe it's October, our next workshop, technically it's October?
I believe it is October, yes.
That sounds right. I remembered that there was until the fall, so.
We might propose, because October thirtieth, Scott, am I remembering right, it's October twenty-third or thirtieth that we're doing the levy?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. So we would propose maybe trying to do something October thirtieth.
The other thought out of this, I don't know the regular practice data and maybe it's survey, maybe it's focus groups, whatever. I'm just really interested in the student voice on a lot of this. Both the current students and then those who are maybe five years out of school, have had a chance to be out in the world a little bit, whether that's college, work, whatever, where they feel like they were very well prepared. Things they may appreciate more being out a few years than they do at the time too. But it's just, I appreciate surveys like this. There's a level of perception in it versus the experience that makes me a little uncomfortable to be defining every decision based on those numbers. It's a great guidepost, but I really want to hear a bit more from the people who are in the trenches.
That's why I was excited to see the number of alumni who participated in the survey. And we have the clearinghouse report that we received that helps us to understand how those folks who are exiting the organization, one, two, three years out, perceive. But your point about those who are in the trenches, the Ethan's of the world, how do we get their feedback? They're probably not interested in taking my strategic planning survey. I don't know why.
Just make it required. Too much to graduate, we've got to do this.
All of those bars.
Really, really upset.
That's a great, great point. Thank you for offering it.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Slarno? Alrighty, moving on to our action items. Seven A, consideration of our twenty-three, twenty-four academic standards.
As you may know, Wisconsin has a little control state for school boards adopting the academic standards for their community in the subject area. Each year then, soon after July first, so this is our first board meeting after July first, boards are supposed to review standards that are being proposed and then approve them. And then they are placed on our website publicly under their teacher, teaching and learning page so families can access what standards that have been approved. So before you, you have this year's proposed standards. They are the same standards that we had last year, have been no changes to the standards that we will be guiding our room through. There may have been some updates, some broken links. I don't remember having many broken links when I updated this. So does anyone have any questions?
Where we see the beginning of the underline area, Wisconsin standards, that's DPI, right?
Yes, Wisconsin standards.
Or whatever the subject matter is, that indicates that that is DPI.
Correct.
It should be linked directly to their website.
Okay.
Madam President, we'd be looking to have the board please consider approval based upon recommendations made by the education.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one thing. If you scroll all the way back to the top, because I only caught it because of your question. So all of them have Wisconsin standards as part of the link except the first one.
Sure.
So if we can just make it so that way it's just matchy-matchy with the rest of it.
Matchy-matchy.
It's very technical. I like the things that are matchy-matchy.
I will fix that. Thank you. That motion to approve. Is there a second?
I listen.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four academic standards. Please, if anyone is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Seven B, consideration of the annual review of the education for employment plan.
Also each year around this time, our Board of Education reviews our education for employment plan. Education for employment plans have been around for a couple of decades now. But the resurgence of schools and boards of education really looking at them annually came when academic concord planning, ACP, really started to increase within the state of Wisconsin in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. So soon after that, we create our education for employment plan. And we have been updating this plan each year with staff input. The staff inputs would be those people, I think we're on page two, the team members of this plan who range from teachers, administrators, to counselors, to now we have our children aboard as well from the chamber perspective, having us think through where we want to go with our plan and also updating any current events, procedures, policies that we currently have. So it's a visionary document, but it's also a practical document to document for everyone what we're currently doing. Yeah, so soon after July first, we also decided to come to the board event to review this and look for potential approval, which would then be updated in our school and society with this most current plan.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I want to recognize and thank the members of the group who create and modify this plan from year to year. It's a great group of really committed people and we, I think I can say that we appreciate all that they do.
Definitely.
Sarah, this has really grown in the last number of years. Is there one aspect of this that you or this group is most proud of?
I would say, it's maybe not encapsulated in this as much, but increased connections and collaboration with the community, whether you know, BARTS and the CTE advisory group and those pieces, or the chamber and our workforce development, or overall group within our workforce development subcommittee. So we're having stronger non-purposeful connections with our community members to understand where we want to go with our workforce and our student needs. Another piece that is going to be coming up here and actually it goes back to what you guys were all just talking about with the strategic plan survey is just understanding where our kids are going. So at the bottom of this plan, I hope it's there, you know what I'm saying, at the bottom of this plan, one of our measurements for the future.
Ms. Slarno?
Sorry, one of the pieces from, keep going, sorry, there it is, is understanding more about the last bullet, understanding the workforce piece. We don't necessarily have that information as to where the kids are going while they're going. So that's a piece, we talk about education committee, we need to, Carl Perkins, reach out. So we receive Carl Perkins's phone, it's a federal phone. And part of it is to reach out to those students who are considered CTE concentrator or students who take two or more CTE courses. We call them and we ask them where they are, if they went to work, to school, two-year, four-year, what their major is. So we reached out to, well, we got hold of seventy, seventy-six students that graduated a year ago. So we were talking about expanding that to reach out to all of our graduates to really get a good sense like, this is exactly what our kids are doing. Like a little late strategic plan, it might not be, but yeah, we can really get a good sense of where our kids are going. Because we know, we know who goes to a four-year, a two-year, military, but what about the other subset? So that's another piece that is in motion. Thank you for that question. Good question.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion by Rod, seconded by Carly, for approval of the annual review of the education for employment plan. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Seven C, consideration of a letter of support for the Office of School Safety.
Yeah, so this came out of a discussion we had at the KAL committee a week ago, a week ago today. And some of the background is here in the letter, but just to recap, the Office of School Safety and it's an office in the Department of Justice that was formed with bipartisan support by Graham and Walker in two thousand eighteen as in the aftermath of the Parkland school shooting. They provide centralized statewide services to improve and enhance school safety. They run the Speak Up, Speak Up tip line and they were, that was how we got our brand for the mapping project that we did here. So it must have been initially funded by the state but switched to ARPA funding and that runs out in December and the legislature and the budget did not renew funding at all for it. They were asking for two million dollars over the next two years to continue their operations. And so, it just seemed that in an environment where school safety is the top of everyone's mind or high up on everyone's mind, it seemed short-sighted to fully define the program, which is going to result in a reduction of services and a decentralization of best practices for other schools. The tip line, it is more than just weapons and shootings. They get tips on bullying, on suicide threats, on drugs, on all sorts of other aspects of school safety. And so, given all that, Dr. Slarno hopefully drafted a letter for us to consider.
Any questions for Carly or Dr. Slarno or comments about the letter?
It's a very good letter.
It is a good letter. It seems very timely considering, you know, based on the feedback in our survey. Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Adam, to approve the letter of support for the Office of School Safety. Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
If I could pass then around a copy of the letter, if people would please be willing to sign.
Should we sign with the same hands?
I can.
You're good.
Thank you.
No blue. There would be all sorts of.
It would just be.
Handable, Mia.
That would start shaking.
Eight A, citizens' comments. I believe we may have one or more citizens who would like to speak this evening. Board of Education Policy one eighty-seven, public participation at board meeting. Welcome to input from our community about topics germane to education. We ask speakers to please provide their name and address for the record. In accordance with board policy, speakers should please keep their comments no longer than three minutes so others who wish to speak can and full business of the board can be accomplished. I will ask Dr. Slarno to please keep time and notify the speaker when he is approaching three minutes.
This is Mr. Bill Olson. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to come forward here. Appreciate that. And I also appreciate the service that you're all doing for the school district here. Thank you for that. My name is Bill Olson. Been a twenty-eight-year resident here in the district. Got a farm south of town here. Been very fond of the district for a lot of years. I like most of what I see, but there are some things I don't like. And every now and then, I got to speak up. And that's why I'm here. Purpose of me being here is to follow up on an email that I sent out to each of you and an earlier email to Dr. Slarno. Thank you very much for your very prompt response. I appreciate that, particularly when you're on vacation. Thank you. Thank you very much. Very good response, a lot of good information you provided. I followed up on it, went to the website, follow all. the website, follow all those links, looked through, perused through most of the information, a lot of it I had seen before, was familiar, somewhat familiar with it. The board should be commended for doing a very thorough job at addressing DEI and these other initiatives, so you did a good job there. How about, nowhere therein is there any record of the gay pride flag, which is the subject of why I'm here. Nowhere is there any discussion on that. Nowhere is there any record of any board discussion, any board action. So I take it this was a sidebar discussion somewhere that the board made this decision to go forward with that. Be that as it may, if I'm wrong and there is a record somewhere of discussion about the gay pride flag, or any action taken, to go ahead and fly it here on school property, please direct me to that, okay? I would appreciate that. You know, it always amazes me when a vocal minority of people can somehow sway the decisions on things. And it appears that that is what's happened here. You know, there's thousands, many thousands of families here in the district, people in this district, yet it was a handful, small handful of people that came in and advocated to fly this flag, and, you know, powers that be decided, okay, let's go ahead and do that. I think that's a poor representation, given into a small group without knowing the thoughts of the vast majority of people out there. And I think that was a ill-taken decision. Because when that happens to me, that is the, just the opposite of what this stands for. This stands for freedom. Freedom. And our freedoms get chipped away, picked away at every time a bureaucrat or small group of people control the decisions, the discussions, and direction out there in life. They're imposing their ideology upon the rest of us. And, you know, it's like you're shoving it down our throats, and without real regard for the consequences of that. You may have some, you know, some very noble initiative behind, oh, why we should do this, you know, and that's great, but there's a lot of untoward effects that could happen here, and I don't think due consideration was given to that at all. Some people even can equate this to actually bullying or intimidation, your forcing your ideas, your beliefs on the rest of us. And some people may consider that bullying, intimidation. And perusing your website, I went to the LBGT resource page, and I saw, that resource page, if you're not familiar with it, lists a number of groups and agencies, their resources available to that community. But it's real nice, there's a disclaimer right at the top of that list, and that disclaimer says, "The district does not endorse any of these groups or agencies." Awesome statement, that's really good, I like that. No endorsement. Well, by you flying this gay pride flag out there, you are endorsing that organization and that group of people, what they stand for. The district is saying, we support you, we're elevating you up here. And that's sending the wrong message. You know, you think you're being, you're being open and welcoming, and we've got some great statements within the whole mission statement and another document that's in there, and that's wonderful, cover it pretty well, but to single out one group and now start, you know, giving them special status and special endorsement, that is not equitable. That is not fair, that is unjust, and you're doing more harm than you are doing good, because you're upsetting a lot of people in doing that. So, let me just close here real quickly. I'm gonna borrow a statement from the senior leaderships, now is the time, statement, quote-unquote here. Education is the antidote to what ails us. Great statement. I really like that. That's a great statement. I hope that you give my comments here serious consideration and think again, and reconsider your decisions for flying this gay pride flag that is giving endorsement and support to one special group over everybody else. Now, it's highly impractical to recognize and support every group out there, but by singling out one and providing that special representation, you're sending the wrong message, because that sends a lot of people, that's upsetting. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any discussion, and if anyone would like to email or call me, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Donna Olson.
Bill spoke for both of us.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate your insights.
Number nine, future agenda items. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Otherwise, we'll let Dr. Sarno know, anything to point out?
Not on the agenda, but if you don't mind me just noting on the schedule of next meetings, because we have our audit coming up, there will not be a finance meeting next Monday night. That meeting has been moved to Tuesday night, July 25th, if I recall correctly. So we have a week off next week for meetings.
Number eleven, anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to approve.
Fireworks. Motion by Rod, seconded by Joe. All those in favor of adjuring, please say aye.
Aye.